Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this February 4th, special meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. Today, our agenda unfortunately has had to change a little bit. So I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda or suggest a change to the agenda. As was thoughtfully considered this morning, we proposed to move school start times to our Monday night meeting. I think we all agree that it would be helpful to the community to have that meeting in person. So that we can hear all the comments and have a more open discussion as a whole. So that said, I propose that we postpone the school start times discussion until our regular meeting on Monday evening. And then we continue today with our review of the letter to the governor and Connecticut legislature. Motion to amend the agenda. Dan, second. Phil, all in favor? Okay, thank you. And review and approve the amended agenda motion. Bob, second. Brendan, all in favor? Okay, so then we'll get started. Comments from the public? To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comment. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. So for those who are on watching and would like to comment, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. And one at a time, Dr. Letzti will move you over to our side of the meeting and we'll be happy to hear from you.
Okay, first we have.
Sorry, Dr. Letzti, just when the speakers come over, if you could just announce your name, that would be very helpful to us since we can't see you. Thank you.
And just as a reminder to everyone, it's two, we're trying to keep it to two minutes and I'll let people know when the time is up.
So first we have Laura. Laura, could you unmute, please? Laura Pryor.
Hi, my name is Emma Pryor and I live at 138 Longtree Farm Road. I'm a very dedicated student and athlete in eighth grade here at Saks. And I'm in favor of start time scenario A with grades seven through 12, starting at 8:30. My sophomore brother at the high school who plays football and lacrosse agrees. Every year, it's harder to fall asleep early enough to get a full eight hours of rest. This isn't due to having too many activities or homework. My body simply won't go to bed early enough. Waking up every morning is definitely a big struggle. And once I'm up, it isn't easy to snap out of my tired state. And this isn't something just half an hour can fix. I'm usually unfocused until around second period and most of my classmates feel the same. Every morning, my fourth grade brother has no problem waking up at the same time as I do. His school doesn't begin until nine, but he naturally wakes up at around 6:30, happy and full of energy. While my older brother and I tend to be pretty miserable. Lastly, I've seen that my older brother has sleep-ins, which are nice, but they aren't very often. And more importantly, seventh and eighth graders never have sleep-ins. Our school starts at 7:30 every day. So no matter how many sleep-ins you can configure into high school schedules, this won't spare the middle schoolers. The sleep is just as important. Thank you so much for listening and taking my thoughts into consideration.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you. Next, we have Molly Shimick. Molly, if you'll unmute, you should be all set. There you go.
Yeah, I'm Molly Shimick. I'm currently in eighth grade at Saks. I want to thank Dr. Letzti and Mr. Gossage, the administrators and the Board of Education for your leadership in keeping schools open since last year. I also would like to say a huge thank you to my teachers who have worked so hard to teach us all during a pandemic. I know you're not supposed to like middle school, but it's been pretty great here in New Canaan. However, it's really hard for seventh through 12 graders to start school at 7:30 a.m. every day. I'm here to ask you to please vote for scenario A that has grades seven through 12, starting at 8:30 next year. When I was at South School, I used to wake up very early and I'm still hearing about that from my parents. However, last year it started to be so much harder to fall asleep at night. And I feel really tired and my alarm goes off every morning. I love delayed starts just so I can get more sleep. I used to always eat breakfast and I just don't feel like eating when I'm so tired. Plus, it just means I would get even less sleep at night to be on time for school. And it's not just me. Kids often are falling asleep in my first period class. It's crazy. We're only in eighth grade. Economics are very important to me and I also play three sports. Getting only 30 minutes more sleep each day is just not going to make enough difference. But getting one more hour of sleep every day would make a big impact. I would love to feel rested in my first period every day next year in high school. And my coaches talk about how healthy sleep is critical for athletic performance. The other scenario with grades seven through 12 at 8:00 a.m. just does not help us enough. Also, it will make things very complicated at Saks if the lower school starts in the middle of second period. Please vote for the scenario that will actually make a huge difference in our health. And vote for grades seven through 12 to start at 8:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I don't see any other hands raised. Just give it a moment, just to see. Okay. Oh, oh, hold on. Sorry. Let's see. Laura?
Yes, hi. This is Laura Holden and I'm sorry if I missed this in terms of how you adjusted the agenda at the start of this meeting. But I do believe part of this meeting is to address the letter going to Governor Lamont. Is that right? You can just nod if that's right. Okay. I was just curious if we could get a little clarity on the other letter that went out from CAPS earlier this week? And kind of how that might or might not kind of hamstring this next letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm not seeing any other comments. Okay, looks like we can move on. So we do have an open motion from January 24th meeting. Julie had motioned that the board write a letter to Governor Lamont requesting local control. And so I would ask at this time, if you would like to withdraw that motion and then you can re, perhaps you'd want to make the motion after we review the letter to approve the letter that's been written.
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So the motion has been withdrawn and whole business is closed and we'll move on. So let's get right to it. You all have a copy before you of the letter, the draft letter to the governor and the legislature. We can take comments.
Katrina, before you, before you do, I would like to take just a brief moment, if I could.
Sure.
To just, just as we enter into that discussion, just to take a minute to explain sort of what occurred with the letter from the Connecticut Association of Public Schools superintendents, you know, the CAPS letter? And just give a little context around that because I think it's just, maybe it's helpful and informative just sort of how the process works. Just for context, CAPS represents every district in the state. It's over 160 districts and communities across Connecticut. In those districts, there are over 1,200 public schools, over 525,000 children and over 43,000 teachers. So as the executive director of CAPS, Fran Rabbinowitz wrote a letter to Governor Lamont representing the majority opinion of superintendents statewide. And she does meet with superintendents frequently in area groups and other places. I am the area chair representing Southern Fairfield County. I'm proud to do so. I've been doing so for a couple of years now. And in that role, I serve as the liaison between the 16 districts in our region and CAPS. And I helped to organize opportunities for us to meet with CAPS and also professional learning opportunities and other things. As an area chair, by virtue of being that, I serve on the Board of Directors. The letter that Fran wrote on behalf of CAPS was not voted upon. It didn't come before me or the area chairs. It didn't come before the Board of Directors or the Executive Board. It was sent and written and sent by Fran Rabbinowitz representing her understanding of the majority opinion of superintendents and communities across the state. I didn't have any input on the letter, nor was my opinion sought before it was written or sent. Important to note, though, I do certainly respect and support CAPS rights and the rights of my colleagues to form, hold and express their opinions. And that's what they did here. Since we have a differing opinion, we're writing and will be submitting the letter to Governor Lamont to, you know, depending upon the conversation today and the letter and what have you. And we're about to discuss all of that. But as a diverse state, you know, CAPS and these statewide organizations, it's not unusual at all for them to take a majority opinion and to express that to the governor and to the legislature. And then districts with differing opinions are encouraged to share their views, which is the process that we're following here. You know, that process of honest and informed dialogue, respectful disagreement and constructive debate, those steps in the process are quite common and they are, you know, I believe foundational to the success of our public schools and a sign of a healthy system. So it's, I don't think it changes what we're about to do here. It is something that, it's not an unusual process in any way for a statewide organization to take a majority opinion. And then districts that feel differently are encouraged to share how they feel about these things. And that's what helps to inform the debate and to keep an open dialogue between and across districts and the state and the state departments, whether it's the Commissioner of Education, the governor, the legislators and others. So I hope that that little bit of context is helpful because it's the way the process has unfolded here. And again, there's other examples of the process unfolding similarly. And that's why it's important for our voice to be heard and why I know the Board of Ed has worked to develop a draft that we're about to discuss.
Thank you. Thanks for that context. I think it's very helpful. Brendan, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for that, Brian. You know, it was pretty clear, but, but, you know, just since I've kind of been around a while, but it was, you know, difficult, I think, you know, for some folks to understand. So it's good for you to kind of walk through that context. You know, I, just in terms of the letter that's been drafted that we have in front of us, I'm supportive of it. I thought it's, you know, it's well drafted. You know, I think at least from my perspective as a board member, I think it outlines, you know, our values as a community, how we've, we've thought for, you know, decades about managing our public school system. And frankly, lots of other things in town and having, you know, local control and guidance. So I'm supportive of it as written.
Julie, and then we'll go to Dan.
Thanks. Dr. Letzti, thanks for that explanation. I have one question and one thought. How, how did they come to a majority if they didn't poll? I'm just, I'm really trying to understand their, their reasoning of being able to send out this letter. And my second, well, my thought is, I do want to keep an eye on certain, I know Dan brought it up when we were going over the budget cave and CAPS. I just, I feel that a lot of these organizations are bringing politics into the schools. And if, if they're sending out letters with, with your name on it or just connected to New Canaan Public School System, I need to reassess who we are and who we are not affiliated with and paying dues to. Because it is taxpayer money and I just want to keep that in mind. Thanks.
So I'm happy to briefly answer the questions if you, if you'd like. So the friend meets with area groups regularly. She met with four groups that prior week in discussion. And that's how she assessed the, an understanding. Some of the groups are larger than ours. Ours is 16. There's a group in the middle of the state that might have 40 different districts in it. Again, there's 160 districts across Connecticut. So she, as executive director, understood that to be the majority opinion. The second piece, just for clarity's sake, neither my name nor anyone, any superintendent's name is on the letter. The letter is from Fran as the executive director of CAPS. So I didn't sign the letter as, you know, you just said with our name on it or New Canaan is not mentioned and my name is not on the letter. As far as the value of CAPS and sort of the work that they do, I'd be glad at a future meeting if the board's interested to have that conversation. But certainly I'd want to prepare for that. And that's certainly not, not what we're here for today.
Yeah, I would agree that, you know, hopefully the open question was addressed. And then, you know, if we want to have a further discussion, that's certainly an option for us. And we can explore that at a future meeting and adding it to the agenda. So at this time, I would suggest that we focus on the letter before us and, you know, just get some feedback. Yeah, Dan?
I just, first of all, Brian, I really appreciate the color. I think it's just helpful. I think some on the board probably had a better understanding. I think also the community. It's a heightened time. So I think being able to explain it for everyone is appreciated. I have a couple, just a couple kind of other questions. Has, did Cave send a letter as well? I haven't, I'd heard they might have, but I haven't seen it. Or I don't know if there was other, some sort of guidance from them?
Cave did send a letter. I'd be glad to share that with the board as well. Cave's letter was, well, I will interpret for you. I'll be glad to get it to you.
Okay, yeah, that would be, that would be helpful. Because I found it a little hard to, I didn't even find it on the CAPS website. So it's just trying to get the information if it's put out there, if we could find a better way to circulate it, that would be, that would be helpful. And before we get to the letter, I guess my other question is, in talking to the other superintendents across our district area, what was the general sentiment? I'm sure there was varied opinions, but where did, where did like our, our region that you kind of coordinate with kind of shake out and what were some of the, just what were some of the thoughts?
Well, I think you nailed it when you said there are various opinions and thoughts, right? So when you talk, you think our region, our Southern Fairfield County region, which although is only about 16 districts, probably a zone of densest area of students being where we are. You know, we have Bridgeport, Stanford, Norwalk, Trumbull, Greenwich, Ridgefield, Weston, New Canaan, Darien, Westport, Fairfield, Monroe. So you see the variety of sort of experiences there and, you know, systems there. And I think that you would have a variety of feedback from, you know, based on the local experiences and the cities, you know? It's certainly when you talk about Bridgeport, Stanford, Norwalk, you know, their challenges that are different than challenges that we may have here in New Canaan and Darien or Wilton, you know, but so I think that you, it's, it would be very difficult for me to say that this was sort of the majority opinion for our region. I will say that our region's not one of the ones that Fran met with last week and that, in sort of piecing that information together, you know, as she shared. But, you know, the, had she come, I think she would have heard a diversity of opinions.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And I would add that the Cave letter, I did see it and I can share that as well, Brian can share it. It wasn't as specific. So, yeah, okay, on to the letter. Comments? Feedback? Dan?
So I think it's very well written. I think it strikes a good tone. I think it is succinct, but covers a lot of the, a lot of the, a lot of the points. I, I guess, to me, the kind of last substantive paragraph that begins with "as we continue forward", I don't, I don't think it adds much to the overall letter. So I would, I would, I would propose striking that because I think the meat of the rest of the letter is, is tighter and I think better. And then I had one other comment, and I know this is hard to do over Zoom, so I apologize. But I would, I would say in the, in the paragraph that begins "as the CT Department of Public Health goes", if you get down to the word toll, I would strike toll on and add, basically would read "language development in young students as well as the negative impact of masks and other COVID-19 mitigation strategies on students' educational outcomes and on the social and emotional health and well-being for a lot of students and their families." So those are my two comments for consideration.
Okay, so let's, let's tackle those one at a time. And then we'll, so I think we'll just go through each comment. We'll discuss it and then we'll move on to the next one. On the, on the striking, the paragraph, the second to last paragraph, you know, the only reason I included the long-term, you know, look to the DPH and the State Department of Ed to provide long-term virus management is I imagine that, you know, it seems like this is going to become something that we're going to live with, you know, for a long time. And I know that, and Dr. Letzti or others, you know, you can comment on this, you'll know better. But if, as we manage things like flu, there are requirements that come from the state in terms of how we report and acknowledge that these things exist and how we manage them. And there, it's likely that there'll be requirements that we'll have to follow with how we manage COVID, you know, for as long as it's with us, which will probably be for some time. So that's why I included that, just in acknowledgement that, you know, we will continue to follow those requirements as stated in the long term as this shifts towards more of a endemic type situation. Penny, did you want to add something on that?
Yeah, actually, you know, I just generally, I support this letter. It's not exactly how I would have drafted it, but I think we're a board of nine people with diverse opinions. And I think this letter does a good job of finding the common ground amongst all of us. I actually really like that paragraph at the end. I do want the DPA and STE to provide guidance and help us. I think if we get local control, it's going to be a difficult period. We're going to have to come together as a board and figure out, you know, the administration is going to have to come and figure out a path forward for us. And I'm willing to like embark on that. I'm eager to embark on that. But I like that paragraph. I like the letter as it's written. And I think that it's, I think Katrina did a really good job finding a middle ground for all of us to agree on.
Julie and then Brendan.
My concern is if we keep it about the DPH, that we're going to be masked every winter when flu season comes up. I would personally like to not mention the DPH at all. I just think that's, that's kind of, you know, we're going to go from the governor to the DPH here. And that's my concern.
Brendan?
Yeah, I think it's important as a board to signal to all of our stakeholders, you know, families, community, you know, everybody who comes to our schools every day, that we're going to follow a process that takes into account, you know, scientific and health guidance. I just think that's really important. And, and I think it's important as we're, you know, writing this to the state to tell them that we're looking for that guidance. It doesn't mean, you know, we're also saying, we start by saying that we want control. So we want ultimate control, but we're also going to take that guidance into account. So I think that's important as a signal as we move forward, you know, to make sure people, people know that we're going to, you know, use care, you know, and real, real advice from, from experts on a bunch of these issues. So I'd support keeping the paragraph in.
The one thing I would add, and I see some other hands up, but the letter is to, purposefully to the governor. And then in addition to the commissioner of the State Department of Education and the commissioner and the lead epidemiologist for the Connecticut Department of Health, who are two of the key, you know, people who have been developing some of the guidance that we've been following for some time. So I think it's just important, you know, as an outreach to them to show some, you know, agree, to be agreeable to partner and work with them as an entity of the state and how we move forward through this. You know, with local control, obviously, which is the point of the letter. Penny?
So I just wanted to add, I forgot to say before, you know, we're an arm of the State Department of Education. That's what we are. We actually don't report directly to the town. We are created by the state. So we, I think we're, you know, we're obligated to look at what the state's doing. We're asking for local control. I don't think we can, that's just the reality of how this board is created. And so I think it's reasonable to keep that in. I just wanted to point that back out.
Does anyone, so we're hearing a couple of different opinions. Does anyone feel strongly about leaving it in as is? Or Bob, go ahead. I didn't see your hand up earlier.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I mean, I was, I had, as you know, I sent you this back and I had crossed that out myself. I kind of felt the paragraph before it said all that. So it was, I felt I was, you know, it talks about the CDC, the Connecticut Department of Health, you know, and we're looking for those metrics. So I, I felt the same way, like that paragraph wasn't necessarily needed. I think to that point, we're, you know, we're going to take into account, you know, various different things to make that decision when the time comes. So I would support taking that out.
Okay, I can see the last sentence, so the second half of that sentence in that paragraph, you know, is somewhat repetitive. So perhaps we could just add a point to the paragraph above, if, you know, that's a way to, to address both comments.
You could, you talk about CDC, Connecticut Department of Health, you know, informed by those metrics and outdated data from them, so.
And we talked, in the paragraph before, we talked about "as the CT Department of Public Health considers updated guidance and direction", like, so.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like there's support for striking it. Anyone opposed to striking it completely? Penny? Okay. So let's try to rework, I think, let's try, oh, okay, I didn't see him raise his hand. But, but under the paragraph, "our primary goal", could we just add a point to that paragraph that sort of picks up what we're trying, you know, the key point that you're, that you're concerned about in that next paragraph?
I mean, maybe we just take that first clause of the second to last paragraph and add it somehow to the prior paragraph.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's kind of the key clause, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, that could just be, that actually could be the last sentence of the, of the prior paragraph.
Yeah, and we put a point, a period on strategies.
Yeah, exactly.
Strike the rest.
Yeah.
So it would say, "and comma, we are confident that we can apply what we've learned to make the best decisions for our students at schools and the local level." And then the next final point would be, "we will continue to look to the DPH and State Department of Ed to provide long-term virus management and public health strategies", period.
Yep.
Julie?
I'd like to see the whole paragraph scratched personally. I agree with Bob.
Hugo?
I just think the concern that I think I might hear from the community as a release to that is that the, like, maybe we can change it as a compromise to consider the guidance. Because I think that, I think the concern would be if we continue to follow the guidance of the DPH, we're going to end up right where we are in the letter with some pointless, right? So I think the concern, at least that I have, is the DPH is treating New Canaan. And we talked about this just like Bridgeport, New Haven and Hartford, and they'll continue to do so. So I'm fine with, you know, reading literature, understanding what their opinion of certain mitigation efforts are. But at the end of the day, we want to make those decisions locally as it applies to our community. So perhaps we can come together and maybe just kind of reword that so that, you know, the community feels more comfortable that, look, we're going to take this, you know, we're going to take it into consideration. But that's not going to be, you know, that's not going to, we're not going to just do what DPH says and implement it in our time because it's not really any different than what's basically been happening that people are really upset about.
How about we will refer to DPH and STE to provide long-term, you know, to provide long-term management? I don't know, I was thinking refer could be.
I think what, yeah, sorry, sorry to jump in.
Yeah, go ahead, Brendan.
Ripped my hand. I think what Hugo said is actually what this all says. We're not, that clause says, "as we continue forward, we will continue to look to the DPH and STE to provide virus management and public health strategies", right? We're also saying, "we're going to make the decisions." So those are strategies that they're going to provide to the state and various communities. We're not saying that we are. Uh, we're not saying that we are, you know, we're going to follow exactly what they say, because then we've just, it would mute, it would moot the entire letter. We're saying we want local control, but, but obviously, you know, public health professionals. You know, provide their views on how to manage things more broadly, and then we're going to, we're going to make the call on what to do.
Okay, so I want to hear from Phil. I'm just going to rework, I'm going to restate the sentence as it was just suggested, and let's see where everybody is. As we continue forward, we will consider DPH and STE, long-term virus management and public health strategies, which will be helpful. Or we can take that, I think we struck that already, so we would just move that sentence up. Phil, what do you have to say?
Yeah, I was just going to say the, the verbiage, we will continue to look to, look to just feels a, just a little bit too deferential to me.
We just, we were just discussing changing that to consider.
Oh, consider, I'm sorry, say that again.
So the sentence would read, as we continue forward, we will consider DPH and STE, long-term virus management and public health strategies.
Or certainly better than look.
Or refer, yeah.
Or refer to, yeah, consider or refer to, you know, sort of.
I like refer to.
And maybe say, as we, you know, consider the best course for New Canaan, like you just call it out.
Yeah, that works. I think that's even better.
I agree, that actually, I think that goes a lot to Hugo's point, and I think what we're trying to accomplish, so I think that that's, that's a nice add.
You said that consider the best course for New Canaan, is that?
As we consider the best course for New Canaan, and it just sort of calls out what we're trying to do here, right?
Yeah, we will, yeah, we will continue, so as we consider the best course for New Canaan, we will continue to refer to the DPH and STE.
I think that's perfect, Bob.
I, 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 I agree with that.
Can you repeat that? Who said that?
That was me. Uh, so as we consider, uh, as we consider what's best for the New Canaan community. We will continue to refer to the DPH and STE to provide long-term virus management and public health strategies. Uh, period. I don't think we need the rest of that, which I think Brendan already commented on.
Good job.
I think it's recorded.
Yes, exactly. I'm writing as quickly as I can, but I think I have it. Okay. All right, good, got that one done. And then, um, let's move on, Dan, to your second suggestion, which was changing the word toll. In the fourth paragraph. Do you want to just, to refresh, re-read what you, yeah.
Yep, so, um, if, from the word, the word toll would be deleted, and it would basically say. As the, so development in young students as well as the, and then these are all new words, as well as the negative impact of masks. And other COVID-19 mitigation strategies on students' educational outcomes and on the social and emotional health and wellbeing. For a lot of students and their families. Because I think we've talked a lot about costs and benefits, and I do think that. As we get into this, I do think that that's part of what I'm hopeful that the DPH and the STE and everyone are going to consider. And I think that's what we're trying to accomplish a little bit with this paragraph. And so I, I think making it explicit that there. There are negative consequences of some of these things, not for all students and not for everyone, but for some. I, I think it's, I think it's a little stronger of a statement.
Okay, I, so I'll respond and then take, just because, um, so I tried to address that. Using the specific areas of concern that we've heard from our community loud and clear. And that's, you know, speech and language development of our younger students, and then just the overall emotional and social impact. So that was the attempt in that sentence. You know, I'm open to feedback. I, you know, I don't like to use the word negative impact, because not everybody feels that way. So, you know, maybe we can find a different way to address that, sort of keeps, you know, everybody in mind in our community, and then we'll look to make that decision as such.
You say impact. Take out the word negative.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was actually, I think it maybe needs less surgery, and we could just say. And, and I agree with you, Katrina, on using the word negative. I just, I, I'd rather not use that word, so maybe we say as well as the toll on social. Social and emotional wellbeing. And on educational outcomes for certain students and their families.
Many students.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the challenge with saying many or a lot is that, um, you know, certain could be many, it could be a few. It's less specific, and I think we, we've actually found, at least the numbers as it relates to education, is that we've, the impacts have not been. You know, substantial, at least in New Canaan. Which is why to me, I think we should just be a little bit more, at least at this point, we're not, you know, totally through the pan-pandemic. We don't know what the, you know, the, you know, impacts are going to be at the end of the day. That's why I'd say certain of rather than. A lot or many.
Okay, Phil, and then Penny.
I would just say that I don't think that certain feels very targeted and, and maybe potentially kind of like small. You know, like we're talking about a, a couple of, you know, different kind of sects here. It feels very specific. I don't think that many necessarily means like large, it just means more than, you know, more than just like a couple. So I think that, I, I, I think that many is more aptier than, than certain.
Do we have to use the word? Can we just drop it and then just refer to students and families, kind of how it is now, but.
Yeah, I think that's better.
That way.
That I was thinking also.
Yeah, okay, so we got that part done. Hu, was it Hugo that, who, or Brendan, that wordsmithed that?
Yeah, uh, let's see if I can remember, uh, as well as, yeah, uh, in young students, as well as the toll on social and emotional wellbeing. Uh, and educational outcomes. For students. And their families.
Penny.
I guess, you know, I'm a lawyer. I actually like the word certain. I think it covers a lot. I think we've heard from a lot of different parents. Some parents, you know, their children don't take their masks off when they come home. They're, they really are not bothering them. Other parents, you know, we've heard from, the masks are a real problem. We've gotten the test results. We've had a little bit of a dip. We haven't had a major dip. I mean, our second, I think it was our third grade results were the highest actually they'd ever been. So I, I, I think we just have to stay a little bit in the middle on this comment. And, um. You know, it, and it's okay if it's a little vague, because, you know, we represent a lot of different families. And the whole, um, kind of New Canaan community and the teachers. And, uh. So I, I, I think the way Brendan had suggested redoing it is fine with me, and, and I, you know, would support that. I think I might, I, you know, I might have drafted this letter. A little bit differently, this particular, this paragraph, and I thought about suggesting changes to it, and then I thought, no, you know, let's just go with this, because. We're representing, oh, you know, a big, broad community with a lot of different viewpoints that we've heard from. And we need to do that, but what, the good thing is that we all want local control now. And we all know what the endpoint is, is, you know, where we're going to have difficulty is, is between those two.
Okay, Julie.
I would prefer, um, Katrina, what you suggested, just to, to drop the word altogether. That being said, um. I, I don't think Lamont's going to be reading this letter and make his decision based on this one word.
Okay, so it, I, I think Brendan, is everyone okay with, I mean, whether we use that word or not, it sounds like, you know. Independent of the word, it's just an insertion. Is everyone okay with the sentence as Brendan read it? I think we are, yeah. Penny and Julie, are you? Before, or?
Can you read it one more time?
I, I have it, uh, it's just a lot of.
Uh, yeah, so, um, I'll just read the last, last piece of it. So in young students, as well as the toll on social and emotional wellbeing. And educational outcomes for students and their families.
That's fine. I can agree with that. It's not saying all students. Brendan, you're a charm.
Hugo, Hugo.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just need to acknowledge that, um, respectfully, like if, if a child is coming home and wearing a mask after school, uh, in the house. I would suspect that there's some social, emotional stuff that we need to be more concerned. I don't, I don't, I, I wouldn't accept that as a, as a normal reaction. To what's going on. I just, I need to make that comment, so that's all, but I'm fine with the sentence.
Dan. So maybe I could clarify, the parents who've told me that, because my kids are not in the schools now, are basically that their kids come home and they sort of forget that they have the masks on. And they take them off when they're home, but it just, it's not like they get off the bus and tear them off the minute they get there. So, I mean, that's the. I'm not trying to say that is the experience of every child. I'm just saying that is the experience of some children in the district. That's all.
Okay, good. Oh, yeah, damn, sorry.
So I, I'm, I'm fine with that revised language. I guess the only other thing that I would suggest adding then. Is at the top, in the, at the beginning of that paragraph, the first sentence, when we say updated guidance and direction on masking. Can we add and other COVID-19 mitigation strategies? Because I think. Part of what we're talking about here is not just masking, right? It's like social distancing and, you know, like a lot of the social, emotional stuff. Masking is part, but it's also some of these other things that I think when we talk about eventually a return to normalcy. It's not just going to be masks, it's going to be some of this other stuff.
I'm okay with that. I see the, I see the, the connection. Brendan, yeah, I see Erica. Okay, and other. COVID mitigation strategies. Okay, good. All right, progress.
Katrina, I have one other minor comment, and I, this is more for discussion, but in the, I guess, the last. Paragraph now, where we say we have learned much throughout the pandemic. Should we say something like over the last 23 months or over the last two years or something? Because I just feel like, I would like to hit home that. It's not, this is not new, right? Like, we and they have all been at this for a very long time, so I think. Just stressing that, like, we're 23 months into this, I think is a, is a, is a little bit of a helpful, um, context.
Okay, are there's okay with that?
You could date it by saying since March of 2020, you know, and just put a stake in the ground.
Okay, so since March of 2020, do we like that?
What paragraph is that going into?
It's the second to last paragraph. It's just, um, we have learned much throughout the pandemic, and the suggestion is to say since March of 2020.
Fine, that's good.
Okay. All right. Moving along. Okay, any other? Edits, changes, questions? All right, I think we have a letter.
I just want to say thank you, Katrina. I'm sure it was a lot of work, um, and I appreciate you putting together the letter.
Thank you, Erica.
Great job, thank you.
All right, so, um, we'll, I'll work with Brian, who probably has all of these email addresses handy. And, um, we'll get this off, uh, this afternoon.
So we have a motion now from Julie, right?
Yes, so Julie. Is there a motion to accept and send the proposed letter to Governor Lamont and the Connecticut Legislature with a copy to the State Department of Education, State. Connecticut Department of Health, requesting local control over COVID-related decision-making, including mandatory mask-wearing in schools. Julie, first, okay, second is Brendan. All in favor? Okay, that's all hands up unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Just on the distribution, um, it's, so we'll send it to these emails. Um, is this something that? I guess, should we put it up on the website or like, because like, like, so that people can actually act, like, see it? And then do, is this something that we would want to like provide to the advertiser and the New Canaanites? I don't know if they're tracking the Zoom, they, you know, I don't, I just don't know. But I think it's something that I would like to make readily accessible for anyone in the, in the town. That might want to understand what's kind of going on.
Isn't it just like a press release, or no?
Um, well, I. I had another idea I could share, you know, I, um, spoke to Dr. Letzti about it earlier, but, you know, we could, um. As we did with the regionalization letter, is just forward it with, you know, maybe just an introductory paragraph. To the community at large in an email, uh, to the entire New Canaan, you know, public school community. And just let them know that the board approved this, and, uh, we can provide, you know, a little setup for that and send it. You know, Monday or today or whenever. I was thinking that might be appropriate, just as sort of me, or we don't do this often. But it's something I know that there's a lot of interest in our community, and, you know, I think it, it's fair to, to let everybody know that this action took place.
I think that's a good idea.
That's good to hear.
All right. Okay, we'll work on that. All right, are there any, we're back to public comment. Now, we have a lot of people waiting and in the, participating. So at this time, we'll take public comment. If, if you have anything, if you'd like to address the board, please raise your hand, and Dr. Letzti will move you over.
First, we have, um, Jennifer.
Wait one second, Marco. Hi. Um, hi, it's Jennifer Dwybby at 70 White Oak Shave Lane. I'll make this super short. I thank you for so carefully looking over. This letter and, and, and all of that, but, um, I had been tuning into the previous agenda on the start time, so I will table all that for Monday. But what I, what I love to hear was. Thinking about the social and mental wellbeing of our entire community and all of our families. And in that spirit, I hope as we get to any decisions on start times, though I know that has been moved to our agenda, that that will be the same. Spirit in which you, um, make that decision as we're thinking about it for our overall communities. Social, mental, um, wellbeing, because that is essentially as well, what, what your decision will, will impact. So I'll keep it brief, um, two kids at home and a full day working, and thank you for your time today, and I'm going to get back to all that. So thank you so much for all your hard work and, uh, hopefully channeling the same. Again, um, intention of wellbeing for our entire community and to, uh, the next decision to be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Danielle McCredman. Danielle, if you'll unmute, there you go.
Hi, I just wanted to say, you know, I know it's been a long and kind of difficult couple of weeks. But I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for listening to parents over the last few weeks. And as a board, you know, pushing forward and showing that we really can move forward with local control. And I think, you know, it's been pretty clear in the past couple of weeks that children are facing significant impacts. And it's important that, you know, we regain this control and start focusing on our kids, so thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Doesn't look like it. Right, announcements in future business, Dr. Letzti.
Sure, um, just to announce that our next regular meeting will be Monday night, um, seven o'clock, and at that meeting, we will. Pick up the healthier start times discussion. We also will have our STEM update. I have promised Melinda and Michael that they will go on Monday. So excited for that. We also have a generous donation from the All Sports Booster Club and an update on the budget. As you may recall, on Tuesday night next week, we go to the Board of Finance with the budget for our presentation with them to begin. That phase of our, of our work for budget approval.
Great, and I'll, um, I think I just saw something today, that's a hybrid meeting, the Board of Finance, the presentation. So I'll forward, make sure that everybody has that link for those who want to participate, uh, virtually, and you're welcome to join me there as well. So, okay, um, motion to adjourn. Penny, second, Dan, all in favor? Right, enjoy the ice.
I was going to abstain, so we could all stay on here for a while, but.
Have a great weekend.
Bye.
Thank you.